Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 4:00 PM, we had a fire and EMS level of service discussion and departmental update with Chief Melton. And at this time, I'm going to ask Reverend Beaumont. No, at this time, I'm going to ask Paul Beaumont to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we enter this season of thankfulness, Lord, I pray that you bring to mind to each and every one of us all that we have to be thankful for. Or for the men and women that serve us so diligently and unselfishly overseas or willing to lay down their lives for us to protect our freedom. Father, we are thankful for this Currituck County, Lord, that you have blessed us with such a wonderful place to live. Lord, bless this evening. Father, give us the wisdom, as the Board of Commissioners, Lord, to be able to govern effectively, Lord, and create a place that continues to enjoy the blessings that you've provided. Father, we ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen. One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two items to remove from the agenda. Under administrative reports, we would remove Division of Marine Fisheries' report from Ms. Janet Rose. And under public hearings, item B, the applicant has asked to have this continued till the Monday, December 7th meeting. And with that, I'd ask for approval of the agenda.
Message for approval?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to have a comment relative to the continuation of public hearing in action, PB 15-16, Moayok Commons, is to have staff ensure with the applicant that he'll be ready next time, or to have us a date that he will be ready, that we can hear this to move forward.
He did ask for December 7th, didn't he?
That's correct.
Okay, and under the rules of ordinance, is you can defer twice or once. So December 7th, it will be on the agenda.
Okay, I was just asking that because there's a lot of effort for people that wanted to speak to this issue. And I'd just like to make sure that the next time it's scheduled, that if people have to take off work, come and speak or whatever, they won't have to do it another time.
And with that, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is public hearings. It's public hearing in action on PB 1515, Countryside Estates, request for conditional rezoning of 55.66 acres from general business to conditional district mixed residential on property located in Moayok on the west side of Carrottoke Highway, south of North Point Boulevard, tax map nine, parcel 79B, Moayok Township. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a conditional zoning for a 55-acre tract of land that is on the west side of Carrottoke Highway, south of and adjacent to the North Point subdivision. You can see on the aerial photograph, the location of the tract is primarily wooded at this time, and it's really just south of the North Carolina-Virginia state line. Property's currently zoned, general business, so it does have a commercial zoning district in place, and the request is for MXR. MXR is our mixed residential zoning district, so MXR allows a combination of residential uses that also allows some limited commercial office and multifamily uses. This particular request is for a conditional zoning, so as the Board is aware, conditional zoning requests also include a conceptual development plan, as well as conditions of approval that the applicant, if approved, is obligated to follow. So now I'm going to show that conceptual development plan shortly. Real quickly, I want to talk about the land use plan and the Moayok small area plan. Both these plans designate this tract of land as full service. In the land use plan, the full service designation is applied to areas that have close access to county services and oftentimes have central water and sometimes even sewer available. In the land use plan, the full service area allows densities up to three to four units per acre. The Moayok small area plan also designates this property as full service. And again, those designations are similar between both plans. The Moayok small area plan designates full service as areas that support densities from one and a half units per acre to three units per acre. The Moayok small area plan also includes some policy direction about promoting compatibility between new and existing developments, and I'll cover that in a little bit in my presentation. This particular tract is, as I said, is a conditional zoning, and it does, is proposed to connect to the county water system. It's also proposing to connect to the Moayok wastewater treatment plant, so this tract of land will have full utilities provided to it if it's approved from the county water system and county wastewater system. Parcel has access to Carrottoke Highway. As you can see at the front of this plan, there's kind of a green area or a green or tract of land that's not included or is left out. That remains zoned, general business, so the frontage of this parcel will remain zoned for commercial uses, and this, this plan does provide connectivity between the development and the commercial tracts of land that exist along the highway. Surprisingly, no flood zones on this property. The development's located in an ex-flood zone. They have had a wetland delineation performed already, and we do know the location of those wetlands. Majority of the wetlands are located in the open space, or all the wetlands are placed in open space, and the majority of wetlands are relatively avoided by the development. Specific to the planned request, this request does include 55 acres. The overall dense, and it has 62 lots on the 55 acres, so the overall gross density is about 1.1 units per acre. It's required to provide 30% open space. They've proposed 34%, 34% open space, which is about 19 acres of open space. Of that 19 acres, 8.8 acres are wetlands, and the remaining acreage is left as uplands. This is a conditional zoning request, and the applicant has proposed three zoning conditions, so if approved tonight, first of all, they're subject to follow this conceptual development plan you see before you on the screen, and they're also subject to follow these three zoning conditions. One, the subdivision is limited to 62 residential lots containing a minimum of 20,000 square feet of area, and they'll have frontage on 50-foot right-of-way for public roads, not a 50-foot road itself, but the right-of-way is 50 feet. All lots are served by public water and sewer. Development will be in conformance with the attached plan. And then their final condition is that the 50-foot vegetated farmland buffer that's required, south of and adjacent to the property, be located on the adjoining property and controlled through an easement. I want to talk about that condition in a second, because that's a little different than what we normally do for farmland buffers. They did have a community meeting for this request, as they're required to do. They had their first community meeting on March 5th, 2015. In the agenda package, it includes a summary of some of the comments the developer received. They actually scheduled an additional meeting on June 30th, 2015, with the community to take additional comments from residents and community members from the Moayok area. And real quickly, you've seen the plan. I want to go through a couple of the elevations before I get to the staff recommendation. Here, you can see a handful of the elevations that they're incorporating into this zoning request for the Board to consider, to kind of give a feel for the type of house or type of unit you'll see in the subdivision. The technical review committee has reviewed this request, and the TRC is recommending conditional approval. TR's recommendations, TRC's recommendations primarily based upon that the conceptual development plan and the zoning requests are consistent with the land use plan and the Moayok small area plan. Additionally, we think that the developer, in this case, has addressed some of the compatibility emphasis of the Moayok small area plan. On the northern property line that they share with North Point, they are providing a 20-foot landscape buffer yard, so there'll be some buffering that'll be located along that shared property line. Another thing I'll mention is that while the lot sizes are slightly smaller in this development, they do maintain similar lot widths. So if you're in North Point and you look out your backyard, this adjoining proposed subdivision has a similar lot width, so in terms of what butts up, it's almost a one-for-one density between the two subdivisions, because the lot widths are similar, if that makes sense. So we think they've done, done some steps to meet compatibility or to make compatibility work between the existing subdivision and this proposed subdivision. Couple of things I want to talk about. Staff did recommend a conditional approval, and there's a handful of conditions I want to put in front of the Board for their consideration tonight. A few minutes ago, I mentioned that they, they have a farmland buffer requirement on the southern property line, and you can see on this conceptual development plan that the property to the south is still under cultivation, it's being farmed. However, that property is, is zone GB and MXR, and in the past, the county's actually approved development plans for this property. The owner of the adjoining property has expressed intent to develop this property at some point. For that reason, staff has agreed with the applicant to allow the farmland buffer to be located on the adjoining property, provided that adjoining property, if it's still under cultivation at the time of final plat approval, so that's down the road, if the adjoining property's still in cultivation, staff's recommending the Board add a zoning condition that a 50-foot farmland buffer easement be established on the adjoining property and be recorded. So what we're, what we're saying is that since we know this adjoining property will probably not be farmed long-term, it may not make a lot of sense to have the farmland buffer, however, provided it's still being farmed in this proposed subdivision, if and when it's approved and goes to record, and the adjoining property's still farmed, we'd like to see some sort of farmland buffer maintained. So the, the intent of the ordinance is preserved. In this case, we would recommend that the Board add that as a condition specifically of the zoning approval, if you do approve it. And to do that, the Board has to agree to that concept, as well as the applicant must publicly state they also agree to that zoning condition. So we would like to make sure the Board addresses that as, as through the course of the public hearing. The additional things I want to point out related to this plan, these aren't really conditions of approval, but just plan considerations I want to make you aware of. The development plan does not meet the connectivity score, and our ordinance, we require connectivity between adjoining subdivisions, and there's a formula that you plug into. This particular one can't really meet that, because to the west, they have wetlands that aren't passable. To the north, you have an existing subdivision that does not have a stub street, nothing to connect to. You can see they've provided the connection to the south, to that development tract. However, they are proposing to, to provide interconnectivity between the adjoining commercial parcels at the front of the development. So that would mean if these two, if the two parcels at the front ever developed for commercial, there would be cross-access between this subdivision and those commercial parcels, so you wouldn't have to drive on the highway to then turn into a lot beside your subdivision entrance. So staff feels like that meets the intent of the connectivity requirement, particularly considering they don't have anywhere to connect to physically on this property. Another thing they've proposed is a trail system, as opposed to sidewalks. Staff thinks that generally trail systems work in these type of developments. There are a handful of lots on the northern boundary that do not have access to the trail system. We would recommend that as a preliminary plat comes forward, if it's approved, that those lots be given direct access to the trail system. So basically, the whole subdivision is interconnected with pedestrian circulation system. And then finally, there is a deceleration lane proposed for Carrottoke Highway. That'll have to be coordinated with NC DOT, which is something that would happen anyways, but we just want to make the community and the Board aware that if this project does move forward, there will be a deceleration lane, which is a lane that comes off the highway and allows traffic to slow down as it turns into the subdivision. The planning board considered this request at their October meeting. The planning board did recommend approval. They found the request was consistent with the land use plan, the small area plan, was compatible with existing and proposed uses, and that approval recommendation carried with a unanimous vote by the planning board. And that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions the Board has now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
Just, just one. I have one, the deceleration lane. You indicated that DOT would be, of course, the one that would have to approve that. Is that something they're going to do? I mean, is, what's the degree of probability that, that happening?
I think it is something they're going to do. I think it's something that DOT would require, based on the size of the subdivision.
Okay, so it's...
I do, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Woody, in reference to the buffer zone to the north against the existing neighborhood, they're saying that they're willing to put in a 20- or 30-foot vegetation buffer?
Yep, the, the applicant is proposing a 25-foot vegetated buffer along the northern property line.
And that'll be on their property?
It'll be on, it'll be on the, yeah, the, the tract proposed for rezoning, it'll be on their property. So that would be in addition to the existing landscaping along the North Point subdivision's shared property line.
And then the one again to the south is, they're going to say they're asking the next subdivision or wherever goes there to put it in instead of them.
Well, if the one to the south, if that, yeah, if that, if that land that's under cultivation, if it ever developed, the farmland buffer would obviously, obviously go away, because there's no farming there anymore. But yeah, at that point, the development to the south would be responsible for any buffering.
Okay.
Which generally, generally makes sense. It's kind of the last one in that tends to have to put the buffering in typically.
Well, that's what they did at the north, and they were asking the other guy to do.
Exactly, correct.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, refresh my recollection on the, the flood zone for that area. So X-zone, I believe, that area.
Yeah, and X-zone is, is means, is that according to the flood insurance rate map to the National Flood Insurance Program, this property is not subject to what people call a 100-year flood or even a 500-year flood. But that doesn't mean it can't flood one day, so I don't want to give the impression that it won't flood. It's just that according to the National Flood Insurance Program, has a very, very low chance of flooding.
And everything that's been presented thus far satisfies our engineering and stormwater issues?
They, they have. During the TRC process, the county engineer and the soil and water technician advised to the, the developer that they needed to direct their stormwater south. There's a ditch, there's a large ditch that's shared between this subdivision in North Point, which has some issues, not because of the subdivision, but because there was probably some maintenance needs on that ditch. And, and my understanding is the developer has agreed that they will direct their stormwater to their ponds internally to the site, and then release it to the south, away from that shared ditch with North Point subdivision. So I, I think they've satisfied the initial comments from the TRC.
One final question, and I'll push. The planning board, they were okay with all the conditions?
They were, that's correct.
Thank you.
One additional question, Mr. Woody. The general business area that's in front, six, some odd, six-point acres or whatever it might be?
That's, that's correct.
That's consistent with the property, the commercial property on both sides?
It is.
So we're not shrinking the frontage of the road so we can take away possible good commercial?
We're not. They've actually done a good job of maintaining the frontage for commercial uses.
Okay.
Has the applicant agreed to the conditions that you have recommended?
Yes, but they'll need to do that here as part of the public hearing process.
Okay, and I have another question. Briefly, for the benefit of the audience or anybody that's at home, could you please just briefly go through, you alluded to the land use plan and the Moayok small area plan, what those plans are, how they were developed, and who, who requires those plans?
I'll do this as briefly as I can. The, the land use plan is required by the Division of Coastal Management. Currituck County is a Kama County, which means we have to do land use planning, and that's been the case since the early 70s. Our land use plan we have today was adopted in 2006. That was done following extensive public input and participation. That was a very robust planning process, and that plan designates this area as full service, which means it's an area that, that during that planning process was identified as one that can manage or handle future growth. Because we all know that growth is coming to the county, it's just a matter of where you management and where you create preferred locations for it to be. The Moayok small area plan is a similar effort. It was a planning effort that was, was directed by the Board of Commissioners. That small area plan is not required by the state, however, that too was a community-driven process, and, and again, very similar to the land use plan. It did establish this parcel as full service. However, I'll note, the Moayok small area plan slightly decreased the densities of full service, and it also added the concept of creating transition or compatibility between existing and proposed development. So it just kind of built upon the basis of the land use plan. And by state law in North Carolina, Boards of Commissioners are required to make findings as to whether rezonings and text amendments are consistent or not consistent with adopted plans.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the basis for the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I had the, the, sir?
It's the applicant.
I'm getting ready to call on them right now. And this time, we'll call on Mr. Napolitano and Mr. Miller. Could please restate your name and, and your affiliation and address for the record, sir?
Yes, yes, sir. My name is John Napolitano, and my address is 1492 South Independence Boulevard, and, and one of the owners of, or one of the people who have the property under contract. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. So I just introduced myself. Along with me tonight as well, we have part of our team, as well as Tara Shoemaker and Larry Best, two of the trustees from Calverly Temple Church, from which we have contracted to buy this property. It is currently under contract to become Countryside Estates, and as we've already noted, we are seeking a conditional rezoning in order to develop, to develop 62 single-family lots at 20,000 square foot each. Now, why did we pick 20,000 square feet? Because we feel that 20,000 square foot lots is very compatible with Moayok. And since North Point's, as Mr. Woody has already stated, North Point's lots are three-quarters of an acre, we're going down to 20,000, the transition should be very minimal at that point in time. Our company, Napolitano Homes, has been around for 38 years, and we do have experience in Moayok. We built the Creekside Estates community on Tolles Creek Road, and that is a community that we are very proud of. In the process of making Creekside Estates part of the Moayok community, we have developed a very great working relationship with the county. We're fully aware of the county's future plans, and we want to be part of making that a reality. After our initial assessment of the property and contracting with the church, as Mr. Woody, Woody said, we called a community meeting. Now, this was not our official community meeting. We sent a letter to every single resident in the North Point community and invited them to come out and meet us. At that meeting on March 5th, we presented this display. And as you can see, as you can see, it's a blank plat. The purpose of the meeting that night was for us to talk a little bit about our vision, but really, we wanted to hear from the community, their ideas, concerns, and just about anything that they had to comment on about this property before we began designing. We as well had several meetings with various staff members, and we then took all of the information that we had at that point, and we developed what is now going to be called Creekside, I mean Countryside. We then sent a letter, after we did that, we then sent a letter back to every resident in North Point again, along with all of the contiguous neighbors that the county made us aware of, and we invited them to a community meeting on June 30th. At that meeting, we presented Countryside. We talked about their concerns from the first meeting, and we talked about how we attempted to address each of their concerns. And from that first meeting, there were six major concerns. First was stormwater. Our engineer, Bob Miller, who signed up to speak, will speak a little more to that when he gets up. But an interesting thing happened at that meeting. We met a gentleman by the name of Bob Buroworth, who was sort of the go-to guy in, in North Point. And we've committed with Bob, and he and I've communicated some, that as we get into doing the actual engineering plans, we're going to work with him a little bit to see if we can't do some things to help eliminate some of the drainage issues that North Point has. As we've told them from the beginning, we may not be able to resolve them all, but we're not going to make them any worse, and as we design, if we can do some things to help them, we're going to. So Bob's on our team to work with us. So stormwater, obviously, was one of them. Another one was the ditch that separates the two properties, which that ties back into number one with stormwater. But as, as been mentioned already, we'll be putting a buffer in there, a landscape buffer, so that the two communities can create their own sense of being as well, so that they're not right in each other's backyards. Width of the streets was another concern, and we will have a 50-foot right-of-way, which is more than ample to handle both traffic and parking. The fourth thing was traffic leaving and how residents will leave the community, and we recognize that 168 gets very busy, particularly in the summertime. We will have one turn lane coming into it, but we'll have two lanes exiting it, one going north, one going south. Now, yes, they'll still have a little bit of issue at 168, but the only people that we're going to affect are the people that live in our community. We will not be creating an adverse effect on any other residents of the Moayok area. And the folks who buy in that community, I'm sure will be aware of that as, as they purchase in there. The fifth thing that we had was soils. There was some concern about possible contamination, since this was a racetrack at one time, and we certainly had our, our concerns. So when we did our soil borings on the property, we did extra borings in the area where the racetrack was, and we found that there were no contaminants in the ground or any surprises or anything like that. And then the last thing was the homes and what they will resemble, and as you saw tonight, the elevations that we're presenting as examples of what we will be building in the community. Now, I'm sure you're going to find this hard to believe, but at that second meeting, we actually got even more comments back of things that people wanted to see. So we went back again, one last time, we tweaked the plan, and what you have before you this evening is what we're presenting as the community. I'd like to ask that you look favorably on this, and our engineer, Bob Miller, will present a little bit more of the technical information, but both he and I will be here for any questions that you have. And I'd like to thank you for your consideration for our application. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bob Miller with MSA, and my address is 5033 Rouse Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And as John said, I think that the biggest things that we talked about with the community and then with the staff were, from my, my perspective, the utility systems, obviously, to be able to be servicing the community for water and sewer, and then the drainage. We will provide drainage for that North Point ditch, the existing ditch. It's not only in bad shape, as Mike Doxy said, I think, he said that it was in horrible condition, so we'll, we'll certainly be able to improve it some. And we'll bring that drainage through our site. We, we, when we took on the project, and John and I talked about it, you know, we realized that that was something that was there in a previous time. This property had been forested, and there's some, those ditches are, that drain that area, and the ditch itself just had not worked for, not worked efficiently for a long period of time. So we're going to make sure and take care of that, and it's not something that's outside of the realm of what we've already agreed to. Ultimately, the drainage comes through the adjacent property, which is owned by Mr. Williams, where the farmland buffer, and I'll talk about that in a second, is, and then across 168 through a box culvert, which is down near the road by a commercial piece of property, again, just south of the veterinarian. So the buffer, the farm buffer, we have a letter of agreement from Mr. Williams, and just to acknowledge, Mr. Williams is one of my clients also, and we are in agreement that the buffer would be put on his property. And what that means is we'll actually, just as Ben said, we'll be putting in that buffer, assuming it's still cultivated, we'll have to change some of that area, that 50-foot area, to meet the requirements of the buffer. We'll actually, and our commitment is that we'll put the trees in, if it is appropriate to put them in, if that area is still being used for agriculture. So they'll have a buffer when that property is developed in the future, where we to put in the trees, if that kind of gives you the timeline. If it's, you know, if it's time, and Mr. Williams has indicated in several conversations, it may be close to time to change to develop that property also, then we would not, that easement would go away, and we would not have that easement since it would, the property would be developed. And I think the traffic, you've answered that, NC DOT, we've not approached them yet, but we'll work with them on the deceleration lane and understand our responsibilities to, to figure out a way to get that in there. to figure out a way to get that in there, that it'll be a safety factor for this subdivision. So again, John and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and stand ready to do that.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicants? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a sign-up sheet. No one has signed up to speak to this issue. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? If you will raise your hand, I'll recognize you and allow you to come forward. Okay. No one wishes to speak, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go ahead and make a motion for approval for the rezoning of the property, PB 1515 Countryside Estates, from general business to residential mixed, with the recommendations of the planning board, or the planning staff, to ensure that the maximum lot is 62, the square footage is 20,000, and to include the right-of-way of the 50-foot buffer zone. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Before we do that, shall we not get the approval of the applicant, that they agree to these, never heard them say that they agree to these conditions.
That is correct. Thank you.
We do agree to these conditions, yes, sir.
Okay. I thought they would.
And Mr. Woody, would the motions be sufficient relative to the buffer requirement for it to go to plat?
Yes. And you may want to add something about plan consistency in the motion. I'm not sure that was in it, but...
Well, folks, you generally have discussion after you get a motion and a second. So would you like to restate your motion, then we'll get a second and have discussion, or maybe we'll get a second, I don't know.
I make a motion to approve PB 1515 Countryside Estates, from general business to mixed residential, with the staff's recommendations, including the acceptance approval of the applicant's agreement to the maximum lots of 62, 20,000 square foot, the right-of-way of 50-foot on the south side of the property, and including the Consistency with the Moyoc small area plan and our land use plan.
Right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, almost?
Well, I just wanted to make the comment that, yeah, the, I just appreciate the way the applicant worked at addressing the concerns of the surrounding neighborhoods, because I know that means a lot to the citizens. I know we are going to grow, we do need to control it, but it's nice to see that they're trying to work and accommodate and make a nice development.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to include the deceleration lane?
That's part of the
I want to make sure we have that in there.
Staff recommendations.
I want to make sure.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. New business, consideration and adoption of an ordinance directing the chief building inspector
Thank you all.
to remove or demolish the dwelling located at 4363 Keratoke Highway, Crawford Township, is unfit for human habitation. And Mr. Woody, just hold on a second, in case, so folks that are leaving can leave. And thank you, folks, for coming out tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'm presenting that.
Mr. McCree, you switch up on us.
This matter arises out of a process to require the repair or demolition of a structure that has been found not to meet the county's minimum housing standards. I will note, as to the resolution or the ordinance that would direct the building inspector to demolish this particular structure, that in the first paragraph of the recitals, that should be 4363 Keratoke Highway, as opposed to 1795 Keratoke Highway.
[laughing]
Which actually is, which actually is the next item on your agenda. This matter arises following notice of a hearing having been given to the property owners of the structure. Subsequently, a hearing was held on May 21st, 2015, by the chief building inspector. He issued his order making findings that the house was dilapidated and in such a state of disrepair that it should be demolished. Thereafter, the property owners were given at least 60 days to do that. They failed to comply with the building inspector's order, and this is the next step in the process, is for the Board of Commissioners to consider and adopt an ordinance ordering that the chief building inspector calls the structure to be demolished. Statutorily, and as part of our ordinance as well, the chief building inspector will be required to determine if there are any salvageable materials in the structure, which he will be required to attempt to sell, and any proceeds that are derived from the sale of those salvageable materials would be held by the clerk of court for benefit of the property owner. The cost for the demolition of the structure will be a lien on the property, and will be collected by the county in the same way that we collect delinquent taxes. Staff recommends your approval of this ordinance.
Quick question, Mr. McCree. Do we have a, I know in our agendas, there's a picture of the building.
Yes.
I think for the, it would be great for the general public to be able to see the picture, after we've had these conversations about historic preservation, that the public doesn't think we're tearing down a historic building. So I think it would be nice to display the picture if it's available.
Part of the agenda package, can that be on the screen? Okay.
It's not on the power, I can assure you, it's not a historic.
That was going to be my next question, is it historic significance?
It is not, it's not of historic significance. It is not on the list of historic properties that have been provided to the county by the Currituck County Historical Society. And if the picture were on the screen, you would most likely not be able to see the structure in any event because of the growth through and around the structure.
That was the one with all the vegetation around it. I didn't, I don't think I even saw a structure in it.
Was it 1950s or 60s, or?
The year, the year of the house construction?
Yes.
I don't know that I know that right offhand.
I just think it's important that as we're talking about the historic buildings, and here we move forward with cleaning the highway up, that people understand it's not something that is of historical significance or cultural significance to Currituck County. That's my only point.
Also, so that you will know and the public is aware, that we do have a voucher provided to property owners who have structures, there it is, who have these types of structures. It gives them the opportunity to have waiver of a portion of the demolition cost, if they will bring the structure down voluntarily. Of course, as part of that program, these property owners were provided with that opportunity and did not take advantage of it.
[inaudible]
So are you saying the property owners did not respond at all, or they just said they weren't going to do it, or just no?
We did have communication with the property owners, but they did not participate in the hearing, as I recall, and they certainly did not comply with the building inspector's order.
Mr. McCree?
Excuse me. Just for the public, can you go through the, just a quick timeline of the process that we go through to get to where we are?
Well, obviously, a structure like that's gone through a long timeline of lack of maintenance and repair. When it finally is brought to the attention of the building inspector, he is required to go out and make an inspection of the structure and determine whether it is in a condition that is unfit for human habitation. He then must give a minimum of 10 days' notice to the property owner of a hearing date where they will have an opportunity to appear and be heard, and present any evidence that would support the building inspector making a contrary determination, or determination that the building indeed can be repaired in some way, or something short of demolition. After that hearing, the building inspector issues his order, either requiring that the structure be repaired and brought into a state of compliance with the state building code, or requiring that the structure be demolished, having found that it cannot be salvaged for a reasonable cost. The property owner is typically given 60 days, at least 60-day period, in which to comply with the building inspector's order. If it is something that can be repaired or brought back into a condition that meets the state building code and would allow for the structure to be habitable, the building inspector typically works with those individuals, but does seek to have them pretty readily acquire a building permit and begin the process to bring the structure back into a state of repair. If the property owner fails to comply with the order of the building inspector, then it results in the next step, which is to come before the Board of Commissioners for adoption and ordinance that orders the building inspector to, in this case, it is to demolish. There could be instances where the board could even order the building inspector to seek to have the structure repaired in such a way that it could be returned to a state of habitation.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we need a motion on this item.
What township's that?
Crawford Township.
Which would be Mr. Beaumont's Township. I believe both of them are.
Yes.
So I move to approve the consideration and adoption of the ordinance directing the chief building inspector to remove and demolish the building located, is it 4363?
Yes.
Okay. Keratoke Highway.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed. Next item is consideration and adoption of an ordinance directing the chief building inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling located at 1795 Keratoke Highway, Crawford Township, as unfit for human habitation. Mr. McCree?
Similar to the matter you just considered, this also is a structure, as you see on the screen, that the building inspector has ultimately determined is unfit for human habitation and should be demolished. The litany of events that occurred with this particular structure are as follows. On or about April 24th, 2015, the property owners were provided with a letter and given an opportunity to participate in the voucher program I just spoke about, to defray some of the cost of disposing of this structure if they were to demolish it voluntarily. They were given 15 days in which to respond, to participate in that program, and show their willingness to voluntarily demolish the structure. They did not take advantage of that, or indicate that they would want to participate in that program. On May 18th, 2015, the building, chief building inspector issued a notice of hearing to the property owners, setting a hearing date for June 8th, 2015. On June 8th, 2015, the chief building inspector held a hearing, at which time the property owners did not appear. The chief building inspector then entered his order, making a determination that this structure could not be salvaged, and was unfit for human habitation, and therefore should be demolished. He gave the property owners 60 days in which to perform the work up to, and including August 7th, 2015. The property owners did not respond to the chief building inspector's order, and therefore, this matter is now before you, with staff's request or recommendation, that you adopt this ordinance, requiring the chief building inspector to demolish the structure.
All right. Any questions for Mr. McCree? Hearing none. And I guess that was just the next structure. Hearing none, we need a motion.
I move for approval of consideration and adoption of the ordinance directing the chief building inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling located at 1795 Keratoke Highway.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. And I will say that I have had a few comments throughout the community, appreciating that some of these buildings are being taken down as it relates to the appearance of the county when you're riding through, and there has been some positive comments on that.
And you'll notice up to now, that the property owners have voluntarily either taken down the structures, or after order by the chief building inspector have complied with the order.
Yep. All right. Next, item C is an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners establishing the Moyoc Watershed Service District Advisory Board and ratifying actions of the board appointed on September 17th, 2001, to investigate the advisability of creating the Moyoc Watershed Service District. Mr. McCree?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, Commissioner Gilbert requested that the Moyoc Watershed Advisory Board be increased from five members to seven members. And so, in the intervening weeks since that request, staff began the process of determining whether there needed to be an amendment to a resolution or ordinance. Just how was this Moyoc Watershed Advisory, Service District Advisory Board originally created? We could not find that it ever was created. We were able to find in county records that on September 17th, 2001, the Board of Commissioners created a committee to investigate the advisability of creating a Moyoc Watershed Service District. And then on June 3rd of 2002, I guess in response to a recommendation made by that committee, the Board of Commissioners did properly create the Moyoc Watershed Service District, but did not take the next step to actually create the advisory board for the watershed district, as the Board of Commissioners had done before, and subsequently, with all the other watershed districts within the county. So this is a cleanup to get the board actually created, and to advise, to ratify any actions that the advisory board may have taken over the years, or any recommendations that the Board of Commissioners may have acted upon over the years since June 3rd, 2002. The format for this particular advisory board is the very same format as that which was adopted and provided for over the years for all the other watershed district advisory boards, except for, in this instance, as requested by Commissioner Gilbert, it will be an advisory board consisting of seven, rather than five members. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I guess, Mr. McCree, I would, just for the benefit of the public and those at home, briefly explain why we have water service districts, or drainage service districts, and what the county can and cannot do in regards to drainage, much like highways. We have
Drainage service district.
Yeah, we have no authorization over highways, filling potholes, fixing the roads, expanding roads, or building roads. We also have no authority over the drainage on private property, but the state did give us a mechanism, and please explain that.
Counties do have some authority to expend general county revenue for stormwater management, watershed management purposes, but the preferable means of providing a service that mainly will benefit perhaps one section or area of a county is to create a service district. A service district is a smaller area within a county that will receive a higher level of service than is received by the rest of the county, and therefore, that service district area will be expected to provide much, if not all, the revenue for that additional level of service, although the county can still use other undesignated funds for that service districts program. Service districts can range from anything such as a fire district, or it can be for hurricane protection, it can be for watershed, or stormwater management, which is what we particularly have used it for in this county. There is not a requirement that a Board of Commissioners adopt an advisory board for a service district, as the Board of Commissioners serves as a governing board for each service district that it creates. But it's been the regular practice of this Board of Commissioners in particular, to create advisory boards for service districts as they are created, in order to give those that live within the district, and will be benefiting from the services to be provided by the district, to have greater input and say over the level and type of service that will be provided for within that particular district. And so that has been our practice. And then that, of course, is what you are doing tonight, is to create that which everyone believed had been created early on, in the Moyoc Watershed Service District area, this advisory board, which will be comprised of citizens who will then meet regularly to make make recommendations and consider the type and level of service they would like to have in order, within the service district, in order to maintain stormwater management there and to present those recommendations to you as the governing board for the district to make a determination as to what services should be provided, how to finance that and how to construct any type of stormwater management structures that might be necessary.
Thank you. So at this time, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion, I have one question for the county manager, actually, the county attorney. With the watershed district not being vetted and commissioned prior to, what is the guidelines that, I guess, I would like for one of the previous members to sit in just as an advisory, not really appointed to the board, just kind of continue the momentum that's been going on in the past, and that's the previous person that served as the chairman, because we've got a brand-new board. So with Mike Doxy retiring, I'd like to somehow let them sit in on that board just to kind of keep the ball rolling versus start from ground zero.
Are you talking about the county staff member?
Well, of course, you know, we'll have somebody from the county, but a previous advisory board member.
You could appoint a previous advisory board member.
There'd be no problem, as the chairman said, with you appointing someone who's previously served.
Okay.
This ordinance will also ratify the appointments that have already been made. So you've made five appointments to the board so far, so you have by this ordinance two additional seats that need to be filled.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter if they've served on the previous board?
That's correct.
Okay.
Then the previous five that we just done, were they not the same members?
No, they're all brand-new. Nobody from the previous serving board.
But you can...
They brought forward to us in the past.
You can certainly appoint one of the previous members or two of the previous members if you prefer. So with that, we'll go back to the... Yes, sir?
Ms. McCree, there are five districts inside of Moyoc. Is that correct, in the watershed?
Three or four.
Okay. And this isn't including all of Moyoc, this is particular areas inside of Moyoc.
That's correct. Each service district has its own geographical boundaries. It does not cover the entire township of Moyoc. Now, I will also note that the board in about 2006 created a Currituck County Watershed Advisory Board and appointed members to that advisory board representing each of the, I think it's five or so watersheds within the county. That board did meet regularly for a couple of years, but I don't believe that we could find any minutes of any meetings since 2011. But that body also still exists and was to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners with regard to management of the various watersheds and stormwater management in particular, county-wide.
Okay, that being said, I hate to put somebody on the spot, but Peggy Lusk, can I ask you if you would like to serve on this board so I can add your name tonight?
We actually have an agenda item where you can add someone. We need to approve the...
Okay.
...resolution and ordinance first.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance for the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to establish or reestablish the Moyoc Watershed District Advisory Board and ratify actions of the board appointed on September 17th of 2001 to also include investigating the advisability of creating the Moyoc Watershed Service District.
We have a motion for approval. Need a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And when we get to board appointments, you can do it at that time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject, based on Mr. McCree's comments relative to the, it sounds like it's defunct countywide stormwater advisory board, would it not behoove us? Wouldn't it be in our best interest if we were to, as a housekeeping thing, clean that up? I mean, if they're not functioning, if they are defunct, or wouldn't it be in our best interest to determine what we want to do with that? Because we have something now that's been established. It exists, I guess, de jour, but de facto, it doesn't exist. And just to clean things up, should we maybe consider doing something with that? Maybe not at this moment, but for consideration by staff to bring us something back for an advisement.
I think, I think, Mr. Griggs, probably what we should do is ask staff to give us some background and some information to bring us up to date to where we are, and then we make a determination how to proceed from there, which is, I think, what you're saying.
Sure. I mean, but if we got a board that hasn't done anything for four or five years, it probably begs for something, for some sort of adjustment.
Right. Could you...
Yes.
Give us some information, and then we can decide how to proceed?
We will do that.
Is that okay? Okay. Item D is resolution authorized sole source purchase of computer hardware and software for Southern Outer Banks Water System.
I'll handle that one.
We're just on a roll tonight.
There are exceptions to the state bid laws where the county is not required to go out and receive various bids for the acquisition of certain products. One in particular, and what is before you tonight, is called the sole source exception, when the county has acquired systems or equipment that can only be provided from one source or that is essential and needs to be compatible with the entirety of a county system. In this particular instance, our Southern Outer Banks Water System has certain software, computer software, hardware, and telemetry equipment for communication with our well sites, and in particular has acquired over the years from Instralogic LLC this equipment and requires that the equipment be of a similar nature and kind, and so therefore has made a request that the Board of Commissioners approve pursuant to statute this sole source acquisition of the equipment.
And staff recommends we do that?
Yes, sir.
Right. Have any questions of Mr. McCree or Mr. Scanlon?
This is upgrading or this is totally replacing?
It is upgrading.
Upgrading, okay.
So this system, there's no, like, a BackNet type of application or any other options you would have for software? I'm not sure if I followed your question. I mean, you said this is a software package to monitor the current system. Is... It's hardware and software, and it allows the operators within the plant to control the different assets we have out in the field. They can monitor wells, pumps, tanks, turn them on, turn valves, open valves, close valves. Right. I guess the question I was asking is, I know there's a lot of software out there that you can use BackNet type of software that interfaces with existing systems. We don't need to, have explored that at all? Well, this is the system that was initially installed. It's... I know, I understand. I know there's a lot of other systems out there that you can get software that adapts into it. I just, I was curious if that was even an option. I mean, we can certainly go explore different options if you'd like. I just didn't know if we looked into that or if we just, we're just going with what it was.
Generally speaking, if you're...
I mean, this is a system with spec when the plant was constructed. It is, it's recognized within the water and wastewater field as one of the leading operators or providers of this kind of equipment. We have experience with it. It's reliable, it works. It's in both of our systems, the mainland and the outer banks. Okay. I just wanted, you know, if this is what we need, I just want to make sure we explore all of our options before we go sole sourcing. Okay.
Sir. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion for approval. Second. Any further conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is resolution of support for pedestrian planning grant application. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Commissioners had directed staff several months ago to consider pursuing a grant that NCDOT offers to assist local governments in putting together bike and pedestrian plans to help aid in not only the construction of future bike and pedestrian infrastructure, but to pursue grant opportunities and programming options. This program for many years was not available. This grant program was not available to counties. That just changed within the past year, I think, so now Currituck County is available. They used our 2010 census data, which was at about 23,000 people. Once your population exceeds, permanent population exceeds 25,000, counties are not eligible any longer for this grant. So probably in about the last year, we would even be eligible anyways. So what staff is doing is putting together the application to apply for the grant. Part of that requires a resolution of support from the elected body, which we're asking you to adopt tonight. The county's already received a resolution of support from the regional planning organization, so this is just the next step in applying for this grant. If we receive the grant, I think we would know something probably in March of next year, and at that point, we would update plans like connecting crawler, take portions of small area plans, and try to make those consistent in how we pursue bike, or in this case, pedestrian planning, which can essentially be used by bikes. And last thing I'll note is this grant would not only apply to the outer banks, but would also include mainland communities. So it would really give us just one consolidated pedestrian master plan that we can use moving forward.
All right, questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Have a motion or a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Board appointments. Number one is additional member appointments to the Moyoc Watershed Advisory Board.
I do not have two persons, because I had some clarification that was brought to my attention, that one of the persons that I wanted to appoint for the Moyoc Watershed did not live in the Moyoc Watershed District. So with that being said, I do have Peggy Lusk here tonight, and I haven't vetted this with her, but would you accept that appointment?
Absolutely.
Okay, so in addition to the Mr. Ely, Ms. Arthur, Mr. Plagman, Ms. Shannon, and Mr. Hudgens, I'd like to also add Ms. Peggy Lusk to that list and make that as a motion for the board appointments.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is Tourism Advisory Board. Mr. Griggs, you have an appointment or a reappointment?
To reappointment, I would like to reappoint Wanda Beasley for District 2 as my appointment to the travel and tourism advisory board.
Yeah, Mr. Bender.
And Commissioner Hall.
I'd like to defer mine until the next meeting, please. I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Martin.
Okay, so Ms. Beasley and Mr. Bender, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda.
Don't we have a game board?
I don't think she's prepared. But we can put that out there for the Moyoc Township, there is an available position on the game board.
Yes, so if you are interested in serving on the game board, please contact me, and I will certainly have a conversation with you. I've had a couple nominations or persons that are interested that have contacted me, and they have a Moyoc address, but they actually have to live in the Moyoc District. If they live in the Charroa District, I can't appoint you as my appointment for the game board, because it is a state board.
And there's also an application on the county's website that they need to go to and complete it for you. All right. Next is Commissioner's report. We'll start with Mr. Idlet. Do you have something?
I'm not sure if you actually took a vote on the consent agenda.
Consent.
Did we not?
No.
Okay, did I ask for a motion?
No, sir, you did not.
Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Aye.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you for keeping me on my toes. Mr. Idlet.
Mr. Scanlon, myself, and Mr. O'Neal attended the RPO meeting in Derrick County last Tuesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday? Tuesday?
One day last week.
Yeah.
It was one of those significant emotional events that you probably should not forget, but anyhow, neither here nor there. It's a long meeting, ferry tolling come up, getting into a lot of detail. It got set back until our next meeting in January, I believe, and it'll be readdressed at that point in time. Mr. O'Neal, I appreciate you being there to support. Mr. Scanlon, always, thank you. You got anything to add, please do.
Mr. Roth, I think you covered it.
And I will say, Mr. Idlet did an admirable job representing the county in our interest at the RPO meeting. Mr. Payment?
I'm just going to reiterate what I've said before, is that I know as myself, I speak myself, which are the commissioners as well, is we do appreciate, or at least I do, the public input, comments, the emails and phone calls addressing your concerns, that helps me understand, you know, what you want to see in this county and your views. And again, I do appreciate those, and I do, you know, I do try to answer and return phone calls as much as I can, so please, any concerns you have, again, I just, I do like those. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
The only thing I have tonight is on November 14th, the Currituck Kids, which is a program that kind of fills the gaps in between what social services and what those teachers can do, we are having a gobbler jogger on the 14th. It's a 5K run or walk, and then we also have a one-mile fun run for the kids and those that don't want to do a 5K. You can go onto currituckkids.com, and it's not too late, there's still some swag bags available, but the funds are going towards guaranteeing that we have a scholarship fund for a child in Currituck County. We are a little bit shy of about $12,000, of having $50,000 in the endowment fund so that we can continue to offer that scholarship. So any of you all that would be interested, it starts at 8:00, and I've got a few of my commissioners, colleagues that are volunteering to help volunteer. Those of you that don't want to participate but want to volunteer, if you'll see me, got, you know, pass net water, there's all kinds of fun things, but it's a great event. You get a really great shirt if you sign up, so I would just ask that any of you all that would like to support, if you're a business or an individual that would like to sponsor, still have some sponsorships available, but it's going to be a great time, so please, please join me if you would like, but that's on November 14th at Maple Park.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Beaumont?
I, there's actually, I guess, three items I'd like to bring up. One of them I was able to see at last week's Fire EMS Board, meaning the new truck firm that Crawford was able to acquire, and by all rights, that is quite a piece of equipment that we were able to, through purchasing a used truck, save a significant amount of money. And looking at the capability of that truck, I would suggest to you that Chief Daley and his crew did very well in looking after the county's interests. Second item I have is concerning the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics program within the county. One of the opportunities available to some of our high school students involved designing and building a prototype boat for submission in a competition that will be submitted to the Newport News Shipbuilding, and will be competed against other boats, I think, designed statewide. I don't know how far it goes. The top four designs, as evaluated, will be actually constructed, and then there will be actually a race-off, if you will, amongst those teams. I had the opportunity to go with that team to accompany up in Hampton Roads and provided an introduction by which they were able to sit down, with no kidding, some of the state-of-the-art boat designers in the world actually live within, who knew, very close by to Currituck County. The takeaway on that one is, we in industry, we in business... The takeaway on that one is, we in industry, we in business, we in the county that are professionals, or in our daily, you know, walk, we have access to resources that could actually inspire kids that are coming up through the high school, that could be the next, you know, insert the blank. And I would just encourage everyone to try and stay attuned as to what's going on, especially in science and technology, because that is the future, and North Carolina has a proud history from an engineering and a technology perspective. And then finally, I was able to attend at Morris Markets yesterday, the full steam ahead pumpkin chonkin contest, which involved three machines throwing pumpkins way further than any of us could. And anyway, that was, that was another STEM, except they used mathematics, I'm sorry, art, so that was full steam ahead. And that was another pleasurable event that, you know, encourages science amongst the kids. There was quite a bit of folks there watching pumpkins fly through the air, that none of them landed gently, I might add. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Many times, we always forget to recognize people or organizations in the county that do good work. Just recently, the Currituck Chamber of Commerce won the Outstanding Chamber Award for the states of North Carolina and South Carolina. So my congratulations go out to Josh Bass, Mary Crowick, Wanda Carla Valanos, with the Currituck Chamber. It was for the bi-local program. That bi-local program is something that is put on by the Tourism Board with Chairman Klugler and with the Chamber of Commerce, working together on that. So it's an award that the whole Currituck County won, so go out there and congratulate those folks for hard work that they did. Josh Bass, good work. Chairman, good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs? No comment. And I have nothing. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Nothing, I thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to go to public comments. We have one person signed up, Ms. Barbara Snowden. However, I will hold it open for anyone else that wishes to speak, and as is tradition, Ms. Snowden, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Barbara Blais Snowden, and depending on the weather, I'm living at 154 Quarter, so my house on the Sound. I'm here tonight for three reasons. Two of them are announcements. On November the 15th, at 2:00 in Shawboro, the Historical Society will conclude its Civil War celebration, or by laying a wreath at the grave of Colonel Henry Shaw. Colonel Shaw is buried by the Twin House in the Curve in Shawboro. It is at 2:00, and the public is invited. The other one is the fact that the tree lighting here at the courthouse will be on December the 6th. That means when you have your first meeting on the 7th, the courthouse will be decorated, and the tree will be bright, we hope. I'd like to publicly thank Ann Bell for her help in decorating the courthouse and the public buildings, so that they are, have a Christmas spirit. The program will be at 6:00 with the Currituck County High School Choir singing, and we will be serving cookies and refreshments, so we invite everybody to come out. Those are my two announcements. The third thing is, I'm here to say thank you to you. The Currituck County Historical Society received notification last week that we had won the Newsome Award for the state of North Carolina, and it was given, normally, the award is given for something a historical society has done within the last 18 months. This particular award was given for what we did to commemorate the Civil War for the last five years, and of the five things that were noted in the nomination, two of them, I have to give credit to you. The first one was the fact that we have seven Civil War trail markers that were put up, and the county provided the funds for that program. I did the research, the Historical Society sponsored them, but to have a Civil War trail marker like you have in front of the courthouse, the county had to agree to a small fee for each one of those, and the county continues to pay that. So that was one of the things that was cited. The other thing that was cited was the two flags over Currituck, which you co-sponsored and generously gave us $5,000 to get that program off the ground. So of the five things that were cited in this statewide award, I would like to share two of them with you, but I will tell you, I'm not going to give you the $250 they gave us back. But thank you very much for sponsoring those and letting us get, helping us receive that award. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak currently? Ask you please to give your name and address for the record.
I might as well. Judy Penny, Moayak, I live in Putten Ridge. I want to thank all of you. You've all spoken to me several times, some of you, about the item that was removed from the agenda tonight. I do not use a computer, and when I called each of you, you all called me back, and whether or not we intend to, whether or not we agree when this comes up on the 7th, you are all very generous with your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penny. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment and ask the board for a motion to adjourn.
You've got a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you may stay.